It is 5:30, the October 15th, 2013 meeting of the City Council. The city of Springfield, Illinois is called to order. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Edward.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lesko.
Here.
Alderman Canman.
Here.
Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Alderman Thailand.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here. We have a proclamation that we would like to present. If audimts is in the audience, if you would. Proclamation reads, whereas the city of Springfield has an interest in promoting the social and economic well-being of its employees and citizens, and whereas protection from abusive work environment should apply to every worker and not be limited to legally protected class status based on race, color, gender, national origin, age, or disability. Now therefore, I, J. Michael Houston, Mayor of the city of Springfield, do hereby proclaim October to be known as National Bullying Prevention Month, and October 20 through the 26th of 2013 to be Freedom from Workplace Bullies Week. And.
Mayor Houston, aldermen and women, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me tonight, for signing the proclamation, and for giving me a few moments to speak on a subject very near and dear to my heart. I know you have a busy schedule tonight, so I will make this brief. We're all aware of the widespread problem of bullying in our schools. While this epidemic is deserving of our nation's attention, another phenomenon is sweeping our nation with severe social and economic consequences: bullying in the workplace. Workplace bullying affects everyone. It doesn't matter if you're at the State House, the courthouse, or the Waffle House. It's everywhere. And anyone can become victim, a 180-pound fit man to a 110-pound petite woman. It doesn't matter. Bullies and victims alike come in all shapes and sizes. It is for that reason that I am so proud to be part of Springfield's first Freedom from Workplace Bullies Week proclamation. The city of Springfield joins other municipalities like Beverly Hills and Burbank by signing the Freedom Proclamation. I am proud of Springfield, and I am proud to be part of this movement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into the zoning agenda. We have a number of people that have signed up to speak tonight, so the rules that we will follow is the petitioners, their attorneys, and attorneys representing opposition will not have time limits. We'll put a two-minute time limit on everyone else's presentation. Our first case is Agenda Number 2013-066 for property located at 750 North 19th Street. The petitioner is Affordable Funeral Services Incorporated. The present zoning classification is an I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to S-2 Community Shopping and Office District, and a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.031, conditional permitted uses in S-2, and Section 155.200. Taverns with liquor sales by the drink in a variance of Section 155.200A2 to allow alcohol sales within 100 feet of a residentially zoned lot. The Springfield-Samen County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial of the petition as submitted, but recommend approval of a use variance to operate a funeral home in a community center on the subject property. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is approval of the amended staff recommendation for approval of a use variance to operate a funeral home in a community center on the subject property. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the planning and zoning recommendation for the use variance for the funeral home and the banquet hall.
Second. It's been moved, and second, to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the amended staff recommendation for approval of a use variance to operate a funeral home in a community center on the subject property. Discussion. We've had two people that have signed up to speak on this case. The first was Roger Davis. Mr. Davis? And as you approach the microphone, if you'd state your name and your address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Roger Davis. I live at 924 Ohio Springfield. Mr. Mayor, we're concerned about all the traffic increase at that piece of property. And we're concerned about, once you get alcohol on that corner, you're probably never going to get rid of it. And the noise. That's what we're really concerned about. When it was a bingo hall, we picked up a lot of trash because everybody left the bingo hall. We traveled down Indiana, Ohio, and Wheeler, and they'd throw their stuff out the window. So we're forever cleaning stuff up in the neighborhood. It's been a lot better since they shut down. I know the city don't like empty buildings, but I'd rather see something else in there besides a tavern. And mostly elderly people don't want the noise. They're concerned about all the noise and the traffic. And they want to operate until 1:00 in the morning. Well, that could be disturbing, all the traffic cutting down Wheeler and Indiana and Ohio. And that's the biggest problem. I've had them all call me after we had a Neighborhood Association meeting, and they're all concerned about the noise and the alcohol. We don't want to see no empty building there either, but we'd rather not see loud noises and band. If they have a band, they open the door, the noise is going to come out. You can hear it a block away. And if it's into 1:00 in the morning, they're probably going to be there until 2:00 cleaning up every night. So that's more noise. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Were, did you offer any proposals or compromises to ameliorate the situations you're describing?
I didn't, but I think our aldermen did.
Alderman Turner?
Thank you for coming tonight. We had a Neighborhood Association meeting, and Ms. Davis was there, and we talked a long time about different options and what we could do. And I think that when we left, we had a pretty good compromise. And if you, with the motion that I made tonight, there's no alcohol. The alcohol has been removed. And I know that that was the main concern that people had, was the alcohol. There is no alcohol attached to that. This is simply for her to operate the funeral home and the banquet hall. And she has already agreed that any function she has at the banquet hall will end at 10:00 p.m. So, and we are also looking into the possibility of the street closure.
Okay.
Yeah, we've talked to Public Works, and we're moving forward with that. So everything that was agreed to by everyone at the Neighborhood Association meeting is rolled into the motion that I made tonight.
Okay, so there is no alcohol?
No.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you. We also have Lois Berry that has signed up to speak. And again, Ms. Berry, if you would just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lois K. Berry, and I live at 937 North Ohio Street, Springfield. I am the president of the Melrose Neighborhood Association meeting, and I want to thank you, thank you all, the ones that attended our Neighborhood Association meeting, and for easing our mind. I also thank you for cooperating with the no liquor. I think that we are not opposed to, if somebody's making a living in that building. We were opposed mainly to the alcohol. And the Neighborhood Association, Melrose Neighborhood Association, is a small community, and people that live there have been born and raised there, brought their families there, and still live there. It is a quiet, hardworking neighborhood, and without the liquor, I think we can keep it that way. And Ms. Davis made some promises to us, and we will be very vigilant to see that she keeps those promises. And again, I thank you for your time and letting us go on with our Neighborhood Association and to keep it nice for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I just have one question, and maybe it's for the alderman here. It's showing up on my thing that the motion you made includes taverns with liquor sale by the drink in a variance of Section 155 to allow alcohol sales within 100 feet of a residential zone lot. Has that been stricken out there? You need to make a motion?
Yeah, it was.
Alderman, if you look at the planning and zoning recommendation, it is just for a use variance. It does not include the alcohol.
Okay, well, that's what's up on our screen, the one I just.
I can't see your screen, but I can tell you that it will not include the alcohol. It's only the use variance.
Okay.
Further discussion? There are no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the zoning agenda is Document Number 2013-067 for property located at 402 North 4th Street. Petitioner is a sign company. The present zoning classification is a B-2 General Business Service District, Section 155.034. The requested zoning relief, reclassification to S-3 Central Shopping District, Section 155.032, so petitioner can sell the aforementioned parcel to a social service organization which petitioner believes desires to use the property for social services that are more compatible with the Washington Street Mission located immediately north of the subject property. Springfield Planning and Zoning, Springfield-Samen County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is denial of the petition as submitted. A protest petition was filed. A motion to grant a reclassification to an S-3 would require eight votes. The chair will entertain a motion.
Move to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation?
It's been moved, and second, to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is to deny the petition as submitted. Discussion. Mr. Gates, you're representing the petitioner.
Hi, thank you very much. As you all know, I'm really here on a very simple request, which is just simply to take this property from a B-2 to an S-3. That, of course, wouldn't be a very hard task to do at all. This property is perfectly suited for S-3. It's what it should be zoned. Unfortunately, and actually, the professional staff agree with us, they stated that this should be recommended. It should be moved to S-3. Unfortunately, this simple change has turned into a, I guess the best word is a referendum on how to deal with the unfortunate, the downtrodden, and the troubled in our town, how to deal with the homeless folks. So be it. Let's do it. Let's have that referendum on how we treat the homeless folks in this town. We've got something that I think is important for you folks to remember. Obviously, you know your jobs, but it's a little different to appear in front of the City Council than it is to appear in front of the zoning commission. You have different tasks. You were elected to lead us, to lead the town as a whole, not just individual folks or individual constituencies. You're here to lead us all. You need to make decisions for the good of us all. You have a problem that the zoning commission didn't have. The zoning commission could say no, and by the way, they barely said no. It was a four-to-four tie that had to be broken by the chairman. You can't just say no. You are in charge of public policy of this town. We count on you to lead us, and if you're going to say no to this project, you're going to have to say yes to something else. You're going to have to come up with an alternative. You can't, you folks, can't just say no. And unfortunately, that's what's followed Helping Hands around the town for a considerable amount of time, which is just no. And we've got to decide now, why not now, to say, okay, if not this, then where? So let's start with an unhappy fact. An unhappy fact is that Springfield has homeless people. They exist. They've been here. They're in our town. Mr. Cohen, I'm sure, will argue, I believe he represents the owners of the Sangamon Towers. He's going to make some arguments tonight, the same arguments he made at the commission. And one of those arguments just struck me as so odd, and it just doesn't ring true. And it's been repeated now in the newspaper and various letter writers. And it seems to me, this argument, that the existence of a homeless shelter creates homeless people, that because we have a homeless shelter, we're going to have homeless people. Well, you know that's not true. Homeless people are here. They exist. They've been in our town for years. So the question really isn't, well, do we have a homeless shelter? It's where to put it. We've got to have one, and a homeless shelter does not create homeless people. Here's another fact that I think we need to get out of the way. I think everybody agrees that a homeless shelter, everybody in this room agrees that a homeless shelter is good for the community as a whole. It's good, I assume we all agree with that. It's good for the community because we have a place, we get these people off the street. And it's good for individuals. I don't have to step over them. I don't have to walk past, you know, them using the alley as a latrine. It's good for our finances. And I hope you all are aware of the research that's been out there for years and years that show that public finances are wasted on things like ambulance rides, police visits, medical care, all kinds of other ancillary services if we don't have a homeless shelter. So it's not an option for us to just pretend like it doesn't exist. It's a really bad policy decision. Certainly, it's good for tourism. You know, if we have a situation, and we have a place where they can go, they're not in our faces. They're not in the faces of our tourists. They have a place to go. Obviously, it's good for the homeless folks, and their citizens too. They are people, and they are not that far removed from everybody else in this room. So I think, let's agree on a couple of facts before I hammer into this. Those facts are, we got homeless people, folks, and we have, and then a shelter is a good thing. So all that's really left is, where do you put this thing? Now, we will hear from Mr. Riley, and I'm going to turn it over to him right now, and we're going to hear from Rod, who is, Rod Lane, who is in charge of the Helping Hands. But I wanted to kind of set that tone before you hear from Mr. Riley, and then I would like to come up and finish up, if that's all right.
Mr. Riley? And again, if you'd state your name and association for the record.
My name is Patrick Riley. I'm a retired attorney. I am a member of the Board of Directors of Helping Hands and have been for six years last past. In the Bible, according to Mark, we are told of the Lord appearing at a home in Bethany immediately prior to his death, and while seated at a table, having precious ointment poured on his head by a woman. Other persons in the room began to berate her and take her to task for wasting valuable oil that could have been turned into money to take care of the poor. At that juncture, the Lord turned to the crowd and said, "Let her alone. Why should you vex her? The poor you will always have with you." And then he went on to say that wherever the gospel is spoken, the story of this woman will be told throughout the ages. So our Lord made two predictions. One, the poor will always be with us, and that this incident will always be told. Now, I start out in this manner to remind us all that we're in this together. For the 20 years that we've been in existence, a group of the Muslim persuasion has provided meals of six to eight times each month for 20 years. Our contributors, our churches throughout the community. And there isn't a democracy, I think, in the world that through its representatives haven't acknowledged that we're all in this together to help the poor, not to eradicate the poor, but to lessen the misery of homelessness, drunkenness, mental health, food and clothing. And indeed, our government has promised Helping Hands throughout these years of a grant of not less than $200,000 to help us along. That's the city of Springfield and through the federal government. And I tell you this because it's important that this is your problem. It is everybody's problem. And we hope that we can solve this problem. Now, when we, last year, we were before you, and prior to being before you, we sent to each of you representatives a lengthy letter outlining what had been going on in the prior two or three or four years. And you learned that we had expended about $30,000 with various engineers to study the various locations. We invested more than 700 hours in looking for a place that we could be. I was responsible in part for that letter, and I don't make representations of any kind that I know are going to be in public or private, I suppose, that I can't back up. And so when we use that number, 700 hours, we can defend that, and it's easy enough to defend the $27,000 a year ago. Since a year ago, with the assistance of the mayor's office and his representatives, we were suggested to other locations that we looked at. We eventually wound up at this location. And I would tell you that when we voted as a board to enter into a contract with a sign company, it was not clear to some of us, myself included, that this was a good decision. But eventually, one of us turned to our executive director and said, "Rod, what do you want us to vote?" And he said, "Vote for it." And we did. Thereupon, through the good offices of Alderman Conman, we visited with representatives of the Sangamon Towers and Near North Village. And we heard things that we didn't think we were ever going to hear. And you'll hear them again tonight, but let me tell you what you're going to hear and what we heard. These people are subjected to drunkenness, profanity, urination, defecation, you name it. That's what they're faced with. It's a bad situation over there, and it surprised us because we had never heard these things in the years and decades that we had been in the same building as Contact Ministries or anywhere else. And so the question before each of you is this, as alluded to by Mr. Gates. The question is, is it going to be worse for our being there? And if not, then why not put us there? And it's my belief, a sincere belief, that this problem that exists by virtue of the Washington Street Mission being there and servicing the homeless in a way can be assisted if we're there. Now, in February of this year, we had a new executive director come on board. His name is Rod Lane. I have been on various not-for-profits for almost the 48 years since I've been in Springfield, and I have seen various executive directors perform well. And I make this representation to you, that in talking with Rod, I asked him, after hearing these things about what's going on over there, can we help out? And he said yes. And you're going to hear how he can help out and what his plan is. One last thing. Washington Street Mission has been there for 100 years. Coming on board were these two structures, Sangamon Towers and Near North, in the past 20, 30, 40 years. And in listening to these people, we heard comments like, "It never used to be like this. This was a good place when we first moved in, and things have changed." And here's in addition why they've changed. There used to be a mental institution in Dixon, Illinois that was closed because, as you all know, it was decided that to alleviate and treat the mental ill, better not to put them in a structure, but let them come out and be treated outside. Unfortunately, it doesn't, and it hasn't worked that way. And you will probably hear of the poor woman from Sangamon Towers who had suffered the horror of having one of these homeless threaten her with a brick to crack her skull in two, time and time and time again. Her trips to the police department and the state's attorney's office met with no relief. So what we have here is, yes, things have changed, and this is all of our problems. But I thought to myself, as I heard her story, how fortunate it was that this delusional human being was homeless and was too poor to buy an automatic rifle. Because New Springfield may have made the headlines like New Hope, Connecticut, and Washington, D.C. These are the problems of all of us. And it's my belief that you'll be moving, will be moving, in the right direction to grant this petition. And I'm turning it over to Rod to explain to you why we can do well there.
My name is Rod Lane, and I'm executive director of Helping Hands of Springfield, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Helping Hands, as many of you already know, has been around this community for 26 years. We've been doing this for quite a while. None of those years have been in residing of a permanent residence of our own. We leased space near the YWCA. A lot long after that, we were at Contact Ministries building from 1993 until just this year, whereby we arranged a temporary residence at 1015 East Madison because Contact Ministries was funded to expand their operations into the space that we were in. We've been serving the homeless, men and women, not children. We're just doing adults, and that's how we've been doing our business for 26 years. Most of you already know this. I know I've spoke to many of you, that we have 110 different individuals in this community that are living and paying their own rent and doing their own things with our other two programs. But what we're here to talk about today is relocation of our operations side. And that would be our administrative offices, our case management offices, and our emergency shelter, which would incorporate 40 beds. One of the things that I keep hearing, and I'm sure that you will hear tonight too, is, we don't want the problem to compound in the neighborhood we're looking at. We believe that the problem in that neighborhood would not compound, but we would believe we could alleviate some of the pressure that that neighborhood is facing. And I believe that we can point to that by looking at 1015 East Madison. 1015 East Madison has been a building that has stood vacant over the last several years unless it has been occupied in the winter for the overflow shelter. As many of you know, it's owned by Capital City Coalition. Capital City Coalition is a nonprofit administered by the Springfield Housing Authority. And as many of you know that have driven by the property, it has been a loitering place for the homeless for many years. Public drinking is a regular occurrence there, as well as outdoor, using restroom outside, and destroying the environment there, littering and tearing up the building. We've occupied the building since June of this year, and I want to say that I'm very proud that the building always looks fantastic there. We have also, anytime you drive by, you're going to notice that there's not any public drinking ever going on there, and we've cleaned up the area. We've cleaned up the property, and we believe that volunteers have actually testified to that at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we could have brought volunteers tonight to say that, and I'm sure you'll hear that from some people this evening. But we believe that putting a positive pressure in that area can only alleviate the problem. And that would incorporate, because of our internal garden area, we would be able to allow some of the waiting that occurs on the street to happen in there. But the security aspect of what we offer, I believe, is what will be the most effective. Along with the outside surveillance, we would be having staff that are crisis intervention trained, walking around the area, moving people along every hour. That is something that's not currently going on. We have 11 staff on our payrolls, as well as all of our professional staff would be under that roof every day. I believe that us being in the neighborhood could only help, could not possibly hurt what is currently going on in that neighborhood. So that's all I have. I wanted to keep my remarks brief. I know you'll have a lot coming in your ears tonight, so I want to be respectful. I will entertain any questions you have, and of course, I'll be right over here, so.
Thank you. Let me finish this up from a somewhat of a zoning perspective, I guess. When this project was first brought to me, I did the easy thing and got on Google and did some research about what are the best practices for a homeless shelter? What makes sense for land use purposes?
What makes sense for land use purposes? I'm not a social services guy, I'm a land use guy. Well, everything I read, and I mean everything, there are no, this is unanimous of all the learned treatises out there, which, by the way, the best one that I found was something called the Comparative Analysis of Homeless Facilities and Programs in Selected U.S. Cities and Counties, done for a quarter of a million dollars by the city of Virginia Beach. But every one of those studies says the same thing regarding land use for homeless shelters. There's a list of five things that they say, that the studies suggest are the best things to keep in mind to get the best result, is the best outcomes for the community and for the homeless. The first thing, the very first thing on every sheet, every research, is close to other social services, period. Everything in these studies say the same thing. And that is, the number one problem is barriers for the homeless folks to get to the resources they need, not only to take care of them and get them off the street, but also resources to hopefully get them out of the situation there is. And the number one barrier in all these studies, the number one barrier is transportation. They, by definition, they don't have cars, they don't have the money to buy a taxi, they don't have the money to ride a bus. So the number one thing on every list, when you look at land use issues, is for a homeless shelter, is close to other social service agencies. Now, they, for some reason, carved this other, the next one out, and they say, "Close to food pantries." Now, I consider that to be the same thing, but that's the number two thing. Close to a food pantry or bread line, things of that nature. The third thing, close to medical care, close to emergency rooms, close to county public medical care. Number four, close to public transportation. And number five is close to the downtown area. Now, I don't think that is necessarily what they mean. What they mean is close to options for employment, options for shopping, options for services that they need. So those are the five things that are in every single study, going back to 1997. I was the oldest one I looked at, and this one is from 2012. So from a land use perspective, this piece of property has everything. This is why it was chosen, it was why it was suggested by Mayor Houston. It is a perfect location from a land use perspective. Now, the other thing that's in any of these studies is, what do we want for a building? What is the ideal, what is best practices for a building? Well, the first thing is always security. Is it something that can be locked up? The second thing is, does it have a protected outside area? Okay, a courtyard is what I think Rod referred to it as. Does it have a place for people to be, to congregate outside, but that is separated from the public? And then there's best practices regarding size, which is between 20 and 100. No more than 100, no less than 20 is ideal. That's what this site has. I don't deal in emotions real well. I deal in facts and evidence and scientific information. This is what I'm looking at, folks. From a land use perspective, this site is where it should be. Now, we've got objectors. We've got a lot of objectors. Mr. Kahnman was kind enough to give the objectors a forum to be heard. I was surprised at how many people showed up and spoke in favor of it. In fact, I would be willing to bet it was 60, 40 in favor. But we've got objectors. And I guess the best thing I can say is, well, duh, of course we've got objectors. We're going to have you, not we, you are going to have objectors no matter where we put this place. A homeless shelter has got to be the most quintessential, not-in-my-backyard use, probably second only to a hog rendering plant or something like that. But we've got, we're going to have objectors no matter where we go. And I try to think of the various other options we have. You know, a high-end neighborhood? Of course, we're going to have objectors. A rough neighborhood? We've got that. We've got objectors. Near schools? We did that with Helping Hands. We've got objectors. Near tourist sites? We tried that. We've got objectors. Near shopping centers? We're going to have objectors. And near other commercial establishments? We're going to have objectors. So, folks, this is the ideal place. And as I started my remarks with, "If not here, then where?" And I challenge you, "If not here, then where?" We've chased these people, by these people, I mean Helping Hands and their clientele, all over my town. And I think it's time that we recognize this is going to happen. Now, we're not, I'm not going to badmouth these objectors. They're people of goodwill, and I don't blame them. I feel exactly the same way. However, as I said in my open remarks, you guys have to look past that. You have to make a decision about what's good for the community. You can't simply say, "Well, somebody's objecting, let's hope it goes away." It's not going away. It's going to be here, and you've got to come up with the best solution. Now, the last thing that is relevant from a land use perspective is this idea about concentration. That was the thing that came up at the commission hearing. They were concerned about having this concentration of social services uses in one area. I've already talked about best practices. There is no science that says that social services like this should be spread all over the city. In fact, the science is absolutely to the contrary. So if we're going to rule, if this board is going to decide, "Well, we should have homeless shelters over here, a mile and a half away from the food, bread line," folks, you're reinventing the wheel. Science says, studies say, that's not what should happen. And as Rod has mentioned, the concentration in this regard is going to make this better. If these people are concerned, as they should be, about folks sleeping on the street, what's the solution? A homeless shelter. If these folks are concerned, and they should be, about people urinating in the street, what's the solution? Indoor plumbing. If they're concerned about folks lawyering around in the middle of the day, what's the solution? A homeless shelter there. The solution is not to deny this petition. Nobody who has thought about this rationally could argue that denying this petition is going to solve that problem. It's just not going to solve it. In fact, it's going to do the exact opposite. So from a land use perspective, from what I do for a living and from what the professional staff does for a living, we all agree. And that is, this spot is ideal. It should be rezoned for a homeless shelter. Now, I do want to quickly address, because by golly, we've seen a lot of press on this thing. And I'm not going to quote anybody because I've been misquoted before. But we heard from several folks saying, "Well, gee, nobody's spoken out in favor of this location." Well, you've got today, and I'm embarrassed that you hadn't gotten it earlier, you've got today in your email boxes, a list of 501 people who have all spoken out in favor of this location. These are your constituents as well. I hope you've gotten this petition. And I want to point out just a couple themes that run through this petition. Mr. James Williamson says, "It just seems to make sense to allow the necessary zoning at the old A Sign Company location. The location is so near to other agencies that provide help to the needy, St. John's Bread Line, Inter-City Mission, the Salvation Army Memorial Hospitals, and St. John's." It goes on, there's people, I don't know, I marked seven or eight of them, and say exactly the same thing. Perfect location, next to Washington Street Mission. These are folks like you and me, this is common sense. I gave you a bunch of scientific studies. People who have common sense know, put a homeless shelter next to the bread line. Put a homeless shelter next to Washington Street Mission. They're concerned about concentration? I don't blame them, it's their backyard. But they've got to realize, this is going to solve the problem. It's not going to make it worse. And even if it didn't make it better, if it just kept it the same, folks, this is where it needs to be. One last comment about common sense. Think about what the alternative is. If we say, you know what, let's put these things, let's sprinkle them throughout the city. Let's put a homeless shelter over in Terra Hill. Let's put a bread line up by Douglas Park. Think about what that's going to do to our town. Not only are you going to have people upset in every one of those neighborhoods, but you're going to require lines of transit. You're going to have a place where the homeless folks are going to walk from their place where they eat, to the place where they sleep, to the place where they get medical care. And is that what we want? Is that what we want? To have those kinds of transit lines of folks walking through your neighborhood, my neighborhood? It's about, oh, I don't know, 20 steps from my dining room table to my bedroom. Do we want to make that walk, three or four miles? I'm telling you, it's not going to happen. If we divide it up like that, if we answer their requests, which is to put a homeless shelter in a completely different neighborhood, it's not going to solve the problem. The other point that I thought, I think Rod was going to make, but it needs to be repeated because I think you're going to hear this from Mr. Cohen, that we're going to increase the amount of homeless people there. We did a survey. In excess of 95% of the people that currently stay at the homeless shelter eat their meals at the St. John's Bread Line. Okay? It's the same people. We're not going to be creating more homeless people in this neighborhood. They're already there. 90-some, I can't remember what the number is, 96% of the people that we currently serve at the St. Bread Line, excuse me, at the Helping Hands homeless shelter, eat their meals at St. John's Bread Line and have their breakfast at the Washington Street Mission. It's the same folks. Now, they come and they have nowhere to go because they're not going to walk all the way back to Helping Hands. Helping Hands right there, they have a place to go. They're coming off the street. They're not going to be back on the street. All right. We also had, I think, we had some testimony last time that I think needs to be addressed. We've heard about how awful it is in this neighborhood. Sangamon Towers has, obviously, the owners of Sangamon Towers have mobilized their folks. I don't think it's any secret that they promised that anybody that came from Sangamon Towers came tonight and objected would get a free pizza tonight, a free pizza dinner. So they're here. They brought them in buses, and that's fine. That's good for Sangamon Towers North. But something about this kind of upsets me, and I think it came out of the last commission hearing. Sangamon Towers has a lot of folks living in there, and they've got a lot of ground there. The testimony we heard at the last meeting, and maybe Bob's going to correct me tonight, is Sangamon Towers currently has no private security. They don't provide anything. I was shocked by that. They don't have a guy in a little uniform and a tin badge who, at least one time a day, walks the property. To me, that's unconscionable. Now, Mr. Riley said that, you know, things have changed, and I'm sure he's right, that you know, closing of Dixon changed it. But we understood, at one point in time, not that long ago, Sangamon Towers did have a security staff. They've cut it, presumably to save money. I submit to you, that's one of the causes. Okay? If Sangamon Towers and the ownership of Sangamon Towers is upset by this, maybe they ought to institute a security staff. I can tell you from personal experience that having a guy walk up in a blue suit and stand there for, and I timed it, 90 seconds, everybody dissipates. I walked up and stood in the alley just to kind of look around, stood there in the alley for 90 seconds in my nice little blue suit, didn't have a tin badge, and within that period of time, the folks that were congregating around the dumpster got up and left. It's not a complicated thing. If Sangamon Towers is concerned about the security of their people, maybe they ought to spend a few bucks and take it on their own. I have deep sympathies for the residents who are going to give their objections tonight. They're in a bad position. But the solution is not to deny this petition. The solution is to grant this petition. And maybe they should suggest to their landlord that it would be a nice thing that they would spend a few bucks on some security. The final point, and I promise it's the final point. If we, my, how I opened these comments up was, "If not here, where?" I'm going to tell you where. I have a map here that shows the zoning, it's a zoning map of the city of Springfield. You guys know this map. Happy to hand you one out. Where is S3 zoning? Because S3 zoning is where this homeless shelter can be. We don't need to come asking for permission. We just do it. We can open it up in any S3 zoning. S3 zoning is downtown. S3 zoning is that vacant building 100 feet away from here. S3 zoning is the property right next to the old state capitol. S3 zoning is right next to the Abraham Lincoln Museum and Library. That's where S3 zoning is, folks. We don't need to ask your permission. We can put a homeless shelter in there right now. It's a nice big, and there's a lot of empty buildings going for cheap in S3. So we, Helping Hands, in the interest of what's best for the community, have elected not to do that. Because as a land use lawyer, I would tell them, "Guys, gee, that doesn't seem like a great place to put this, right next to our main tourist area, right next to our main downtown areas." But we could do it. So when you say tonight, if you say, "No," then, and you don't say, "No, but how about here?" What you've said is, "No, but how about 100 feet away on the corner over there?" The mayor had some, had a great idea, was aware of this reality, suggested this as an excellent alternative. I would ask you all to do what the professionals have suggested is right. And the professionals includes the Helping Hands Executive Director. It includes the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. It includes four of the nine commissioners. It includes the United Way, who I think we all know, knows just a little bit about taking care of the unfortunate. United Way has said this is the right place. Mayor Hoot Houston has said this is the right place. And take what you want from the editorial staff of the State General Register. They've said it's the right place to be. So anybody who's interested in the community as a whole has said, "This is where it should be. This is what we should do." And I would ask you to do exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer to some other folks who are here to speak tonight. I'll sum up after their time.
Okay. The next, I have Lester Rogers. Two minutes.
Hello, council members. Dear Mayor and everyone else here at this meeting tonight, I am Lester Allen Rogers. I am the brother of Ray Eugene Rogers, the man who died on railroad tracks on October 4th of this year. He died next to Helping Hands and U-Turn over there by Madison and 10th Street. I am also on the board member of Homeless United for Change, which we fight for homeless people's rights. Because of my brothers died on these tracks, I am asking today for all of you to vote yes. Having a shelter or any service for the homeless next to railroad tracks is just too dangerous. My brother felt helpless and hopeless. He was taking, talking about suicide. I tried to help my brother, but I had to borrow him because he broke some rules there. I understand the building's policy and stuff. I had to do it. The hate is horrible. He went to the hospital for help, and they released him. Back to Helping Hands for help. He went to the U-Turn for help. Both places are both by the railroad tracks. The railroad tracks was like giving him a loaded gun. We are respectfully asking any program next to a railroad track to be certified in suicide preventions and management. There is also need to be a formal suicide watch even now after my brother's death. We respectfully ask no person who has a mental illness be housed next to a railroad track and the Mental Health Center of Illinois get involved. We are respectfully asking a safety fence to be built around any public building near a railroad track.
Mr. Rogers, your 10 minutes, sir.
Okay. As a first step, we are asking to meet with you, Mayor Houston, and respectfully of the Mental Health Center, and maybe begin a safety-aware board and talk about safety first for everyone, homeless and staff at the social agencies. Please heal the hate and vote yes. Thank you. Lester Rogers.
Thank you. Next, we have Barb Olson.
Heal the hate. Vote yes. Heal the hate.
No, sir. Lester, sir. As long as he said everything I could say.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have John Germaine.
First of all, I wanted to pass these around to the people to look at. I took pictures a while back.
And Mr. Germaine, if you just, if you state your name and address.
Oh, okay. My name is- My name is John Germain. I'm 62, and I live at Sangamon Towers. And I wrote a letter, not out of hate, but out of concern. I've been in the area for roughly five years. I've been a guard across the street, and I've been a guard at Sangamon Towers, and I've lived there two years. Well, anyway, here's the letter. My name is John Germain. We just went through all that. Before that, I was a guard in the building for a year or so, and a guard across the street at the office of the Inspector General for a couple of years. So I've been in the area, like I said, for five years, and I've seen the homeless problem grow and grow. A shelter where the old sign building was would add fuel to the fire, I feel. The homeless roam the grounds at will, and even though we do have guards at the building, I'm not sure what their schedule is, but I see them downstairs, they try to keep them off the property as best they can. My girlfriend was brutally attacked by a homeless man out in the garden a few years ago. He waylaid her, knocked her down, hit her hard, and an old man was taking pictures of flowers. They had to run him down, and the police got him and took him to jail. She did nothing to provoke the attack and never thought of there being a threat until that happened. I mean, we've seen homeless around the area roaming for a long time. Now she is afraid to go out into the garden and out into the grounds, day or night. Just recently, I was sitting at the picnic table area, I believe it was on a Sunday, if I remember correctly, and several friends were sitting out there. It was just a lighthearted day, and a man approached us for cigarettes. Couple of people were kind enough to give them to him. We looked over a few moments later, and he's coming at us over with a knife in his hand. So I basically pulled a knife out and just set it on the table, hoping he would see it and leave, which he did. Basically, that's just one of many problems of using the bathroom on the property, yelling obscenities when kids are around. There's a lot of other problems, which some of them have already been addressed. And they've been intimidating people at Sangamon Towers for some time. I had a guy that approached me while I was taking pictures and told me that if I didn't put that camera away, he was going to abuse it on me. And that was while I was on the property. And like I say, the pictures show people actually on the property that don't belong there. And I'm not trying to cause any problems with it. I'm just proving something that I feared someone would eventually say, well, you don't have any proof they're doing this. Well, I think the pictures clearly state homeless people occupy the property and roam it at will. Night, day, it doesn't matter. Drinking, I'm guessing some of them are abusing drugs. I don't know how to put it nicely. But also...
And Mr. Germain, your two minutes, sir.
Could I say one more thing, sir?
Sure.
One more thing. Like I say, it's not a hate that I have for people. I understand. And I personally would like to give a cheer to the people at Catholic Charities, at the mission, at the different organizations that are trying to help people. I understand that. And personally, they're good people. I believe it. But the thing is, you're going to turn Sangamon Towers into a ghost town within a year or so because people are moving out like crazy right now because of this threat. And I see that the people that they reject from there are going to be looking for somebody to get revenge on. That's what I feel as a guard, a former guard, and it will come to pass. They're going to be out looking for trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Germain.
Thank you for hearing me.
Next, we have Jerry Garrison. Mr. Garrison?
I'm not Jerry.
Oh, Mrs., I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We have homeless all around us. They were looking for smokes. I've picked up tracks, and other people have picked it up, too. We are supposed to do that. If we say anything to them, the homeless say bad things to us. Most people are afraid of them. If you let more of them move in that building, every more homeless will be all around us. Right now, the homeless stand around our doorways. You know our children won't bring our grandchildren around to stay us, so we need to keep our building safe and have the homeless be straightened up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison.
Mayor Houston, members of council, my name is Daniel J. Mulcahy. I live at 1968 Out of Park Drive, Springfield, Illinois, and I am the owner of Dan Core Development Company. All of you have received from me previous this meeting my objection in writing to the mayor and accompanying literature depicting what we have planned to build into the downtown area of Springfield, Illinois, at Second Rennel Street, which is known as the Metropolitan Place. And I'll take just a few minutes of my time to explain it to you. It's a two-phase new construction project, project located just blocks Memorial Hospital. Phase one includes a stunning two-floor, 32-unit, single-bedroom apartment building. Phase two will include an equally magnificent design, 6,000 square feet of ground-level retail commercial space. With sixteen two-bedroom units, Metropolitan features covered parking, contemporary spaces entered, and open floors. Plans are for 12-foot ceilings and marvelous large windows providing all-inspiring design with abundance of natural light. Exposed wood beams and modern finishes throughout are sure to satisfy. We are great extent to bring the best we can to downtown Springfield, to attempt to stimulate the outward movement of people downtown into the suburbs, to create and help the medical district or students, the folks that live there, and yes, also, in the second phase of this, to attract students at Sangamon State University. I would not take any more time tonight. I know it's more than least to have the speech, except to say, we are not opposed to the homeless. We believe that citizens, we have an obligation to take care of them, and that we will. We also have an obligation to take care of the people who take care of the people that need help. And for that, I respect the request tonight, that you deny the request to be zoned tightly placed there across the street where we have a $9 million project plan for the downtown Springfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy. Next, we have Dennis Albanese.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Dennis Albanese. I reside at 15 Timber Hill, near Fairhurst Mall. My office is at the central building, 319 East Madison. I'm the building manager and one of the owners amongst other local investors. We've been involved with that actually since the mid-1980s, and we've dealt with homeless people on a regular basis. And I believe, according to record, show that the Washington Street Mission came in around 1975, so maybe 10 years before. I just want to take this opportunity, if I could, just give you a quick, brief history of that area. About that time, if you'll picture 1975, maybe it was just shortly before that that the railroad tracks used to be in Madison. I think towards the early 70s, they took the tracks out. But it was a different, whole different environment at that time when the tracks were going down there. People weren't usually going east and west on that. Today, it's an entirely different, you know, ecosystem or whatever terminology you want to use. So I can see where at the time when Washington Street came in, it wasn't really that, it wasn't really that, you know, it didn't get that much attention. Since then, our facility was originally an old warehouse, one-story warehouse, and where I'll say my father and other folks that were involved purchased that and decided to redevelop that as the tracks were being removed, and they had vision for that area. And there have been a lot of positive changes, including the Union Station down the street, which was dilapidated, and now you know it's a great gem for the city and for tourism. So the city, I mean, just sometimes we take things for granted. We don't think about all the changes that have been happening right in front of us. The former lottery building next door was developed. As you know, Isringhausen has acquired property, and they continue to expand. The hospital, as you go further east, new structures, all that's been growing that way. Unfortunately, some entities that have been there, you know, are now facing the consequences of that. I'm, you know, I'm as sensitive to the homeless as any other Christian human being, and I am Catholic. And, you know, I try to deal with them with respect. Every day I run into them. I mean, I, you know, patrol a lot myself at times. We don't have full-time security. We have, and generally, when it gets dark early, you know, by 4:30, 5:00, it's pretty dark. And we have quite a few females in our facility. It's an 83,000-square-foot building, state and private offices, and occasionally, you know, if someone's concerned or intimidated, they'll call, and they expect us to go right away to make sure everything's okay. You know, the men generally, they're okay. They just fend for themselves, but obviously, you know, I get more calls from the females. So we have security when it gets dark. It actually sits out there and watches. I mean, that costs us my, you know, it's not significant, granted, but it's a fun, it's expenditure we have to incur for these reasons. I believe part of the, I mean, I don't know that, I know A Sign Company has plenty of stories of their own circumstances there. But again, what I want to get back to is the general direction of that area, especially now with the county market, the expansion of Memorial, St. John's, everything, all those areas are being redeveloped, you know? And to stop that, I think would really be disheartening and a squandering of those efforts that have been made to this point, not to mention the dollars and the time spent by people to do that. Our particular issues, and I can get into, you know, we've, the incidences, you'll hear plenty of those from the residences. I just want to share one other thing, that I was in contact with the manager of the St. Nicholas Hotel. She's sick, so she can't be here tonight, but she's had the same issues. You know, I've driven by, and they're sleeping in her apartment on her doorstep as well. So I, I'll try and conclude here to keep the time down. I do believe there are more appropriate areas, and, you know, I feel sorry for the fact that, you know, they, there is already Washington Street Clinic Mission there, and in my humble opinion, I believe that the location of Salvation Army has acquired on Ninth makes the most amount of sense. In my opinion, well, from what I've heard through the grapevine, I don't want to disclose any names, but they have a bigger building there than they needed, and they need, I think, pool their resources with another entity like this. Maybe they could find a way to lease a floor out so that they can, you know, it's just like another office building. They can lease it out, and they can keep everyone in the area they won't have to worry about. They can, you know, coordinate transportation after transportation. But, you know, that's my suggestion. I mean, I could get into other details about the, you know, the R-DAT or S-DAT study. Those had findings that were contrary to homeless shelter being downtown. Makes it harder for me to lease space downtown if I, you know, have to deal with that. But thank you for your time, and I hope you unfortunately deny this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, did you want to?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, my name is Robert Cohen. I'm a lawyer. My office is at Myers Building, and the firm is Giffen, Ring, Cohen, and Bo Davis. You know, frankly, I speculated tonight whether to go through my routine or simply say, you've heard it all. People have been harassing you and trying to persuade you for a month or two, and just say, I'll answer any questions that you may have, but I don't think I could do that. I'd like to do that. I'd like to let you all go home and watch the Cardinal game, which is where I'd like to be, but this is important, and there's some things we've had to do tonight. Before I get into my comments, I would like to reflect upon some of the things that Gordon He commented about petitions online, an online petition of 501 signatures, and he put it on Facebook. Facebook goes all over the world. He may have signers on that petition from Singapore or Mars. They could be from anywhere. If you want petitions, signed petitions, I have a stack of them that I'll show you if you'd like to see them. But the comments that these folks have made here are reflective of everything that the people in the petitions have said. Now, you folks have a decision to make, worse than what we're have to decide tonight. Somebody in some previous administration put a homeless shelter in S3. And Gates is right. He could legally go to any S3-zoned piece of real estate in this city and put a shelter there. Well, I can't believe that's what you really want to do. It might have been okay when that was done, and whenever it was, I don't really know. But it can't stay that way. And you're going to have to put a homeless shelter into a separate zoning classification because these people will be back. If they lose tonight, they'll be back here on another site. And it's going to be, you're going to be presented with an alternative that I really don't think you want. I don't think you want a homeless shelter in S3, but that's up to you. You're not here tonight, frankly, to decide if not here, where. This is not a two-part thing. Yes or no here, and then where, if not here, where? They've, I understand, I don't know, but I understand that they've been at this for a while, and they've tried in other wards, and it's been defeated in other wards. And I don't know where, but they're going to have to find another location, it seems to me, because the land planners' reports that have been here, the RUDAT report and some of the other previous reports, have set aside a medical district. And the medical district was intended to be developed and to have structures built on it that pay real estate taxes. Now, you know what's happened to downtown Springfield? There are no office tenants for any of the office building there. The state of Illinois has, through its governor, previous and existing, have decided to take them to Chicago. And because our economy is so bad, the rents have gone down to keep them here. And then they come into the border review and protest their real estate taxes, and they have to win because the property values have declined. You know Rick Lawrence, a client of mine, has bought the old Ferguson building and the building down the street for an insignificant amount of money, hoping to rehab it and make it into a use, putting it back on the tax rolls so it'll earn a little money. it into a use, putting it back on the tax rolls so it'll earn a little money for this city. But there are, there are no office tenants in this city anymore until something happens. They say this is the perfect location for this use, and that Helping Hands will cure all the problems, excuse me, will cure all the problems out here. Rod will tell you that Helping Hands kicks everybody out at seven o'clock in the morning. Out! And they don't open again till five. That's when they can come in. And the doors close at five o'clock, and nobody else can get out. Now, where are these people supposed to go from seven o'clock in the morning till five? And you know why they want them out of there? And I don't blame them. Because their staff is in there working, and the staff doesn't want to be with these people. Because like the tenants of Sangamon Towers and near North Village, they're scared. And they don't want to be in the same building where they consider dangerous presence.
That's not true. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
People, we have a speaker, let him speak. We've listened to everyone else.
The Ward Two attempt was beaten because of concentration argument. So I understand, but that's what I hear. And that's the same thing here. Now, if you, let's look at this one. Which direction is St. John's Hospital going to expand? And you know it's going to expand. They can't go east because the tracks are there. They can't go north because historic residences are there. They can't go south because there's something there. Their only choice is to expand to the west, and the rest is right where we are. Now, what do we say to St. John's Hospital when they come in and say, "They want to come down, or they want to buy out the homeless shelter in the A-Sign building?" Go, "Sure, heck, they're going to do that. Let's come." Now, if we're trying to somehow help the real estate tax problem in this city to supplement where the downtown heavy tax base used to be, we've got to develop the medical district for medical uses. And this is totally contradictory to that. All right. Look, I'm not against the homeless, and my clients aren't against the homeless. None of you are against the homeless. We all have hearts, and we all want to see something done for them. But you can't do it at the price of safety and creation of nuisance. You can't do that. Because it's going, it's there now, and there's no abatement of it. You may not know, and I've never seen the contract, but I understand the contract between Helping Hands and the Bringuetts contains, was negotiated to contain, a right of first refusal. You know what that is? Others may or may not. But I'll tell you what it is. The right of first refusal for Helping Hands says, in a written contract, if after this closes and the right of first refusal continues, if anybody makes an offer to the Bringuetts for the rest of his real estate, now remember, they're only buying a third of, a third of the Bringuet property, so that's two-thirds that are subject to this right of first refusal. If somebody comes to them and makes them an offer, Helping Hands has the right to match it and buy it. And in meetings we've had for the last few weeks, Helping Hands, Mr. Lane has said, and I don't blame him, "We ask it. If that comes up, and if we have the funds, we'll buy it. And we'll expand our shelter into that building." All right? If they're buying a third of a building, and they're going to put 50 people in there, and they expand it into the other two-thirds, that's a total of 150 new people in that shelter. Where are these people? How are we going to cope with these people? We had neighborhood meetings, Sam Conman had a neighborhood meeting, invited the police, the very police who patrol this area, they work this area. And he said, "We don't have the resources to do this. We don't have the money and the resources to be over here every five minutes." The police were called 851 times last year. Gee, money. Eight hundred and fifty-one times. And you know, you know what triage is? You know what triage is? Treat the worst case first. So if somebody calls up and says, "Somebody is urinating on our grass, and I want you to come over here and arrest them." And somebody's being shot at in another part of town, where are they going to go? And I don't blame them. They're going to go where the most dire case is first. As Rod Lane said at our meeting, his request is not the, quote, "Not the end-all, be-all." All they do is sleep people there. I have a copy of their layout, which I think, I returned the original of Gordon Gates this evening. What'd you do with Gordon Gates, I'm sorry? You may have seen it, I presume you've all seen it. And it shows all the cots. There's a lot of offices in there for people to work in during the day. The doors close, and that's it. They show two showers for 50 people in the drawing, then an architect prepared two showers for 50 people. And I guess one's men and one's women, I don't know. Two bathrooms. Well, these people now defecate and urinate outside, on the grass and on the buildings. They have a courtyard that they propose. The one, Sangamon Towers has a courtyard, a large one, and these folks have taken it away from us. They occupy our Sangamon Towers courtyard that's there for them to use. And when we come and try to occupy it, they threaten the people who want to use it, the people who are entitled to it. And you can't, you can't argue with them. I will say, in some of our meetings that we've had, the Washington Street Mission is asleep. They don't do anything to help this problem. I asked that question to the executive director, who may be here tonight, I don't know. I asked him at one of the former meetings, I said, "What do you do?" He said, "Well, we do what we can. We can't, we don't have a lot of resources to do things." They provide donuts in the morning. And I don't know who has that franchise, but they do. Everyone congregates on Fifth Street because that's where the, that's where the St. John's Red Line is. And that's where these folks, these indigent folks, go for lunch, really eat. Not only them, I guess they come from all other places too. I don't... But Fifth Street, when they're out and active, is an entranceway to the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library and Museum. It's the parking building. And they have to pass this to get in to see the, they come from all over the world, you know that. Thousands of them come here to see that museum, and well, they should because it's a magnificent They have substantial time to loiter and nowhere to go to do it. They don't have bathrooms for them. Although, I've heard, and we've sent our people out to try and get support for us at the medical school, in the hospitals, and the new grocery store, and they say that people come in there to use their bathrooms. Some come in there to shower, not to shower, to bathe. Why do you stop there? And somebody said, or, I'm sorry, Gordon Gates said, "We don't hire any security."
What did they, $220,000 in security?
$220,000 in security. In fact, if our security that is there would have seen Gordon Gates loitering outside, they've invited me in for a cup of coffee. We have security, and that's another $200,000 in the budget that somebody has to pay. I understand, but don't know, haven't seen it. I understand County Market has security. A lot of these places have security of necessity to try and keep their property secure and safe. All right. The Bradley Supply Company, directly across the street from Sangamon Towers and from the, this property, has retail sales, and they have walk-ins, people drive up and walk in. And I don't know if any of you, I don't know if you received the Bradley protest letter. You know Bradley filed a written protest calling for two-thirds vote, and without reading it because it's long. The author says, "Eighty-five percent of our customers are walk-in. They drive up to local, total chaos, yelling, smoking, drinking, doing drugs. Starts about 7:00 a.m., and some days continues until about 11:00 a.m. Then they migrate over to Fifth Street for lunch. The problem continues on North Fifth Street till 6:00 or later every day. People lying, laying all over the grass, drinking and smoking, littering everywhere. It's a bad reflection on the city, and for out-of-town people who come here to see it." The people at Police Department can't control it. Eight hundred and forty-seven calls are made to the Police Department this year. They come to these cases, the uniformed officers come there, and if they're fighting, they break it up, and the next day it happens again, and then the next day again, and it's a reoccurring thing. If I were the head of the Police Department, I wouldn't know what to do. Can't arrest everybody every day. Got to do something. These residents at Sangamon Towers and near North Village and the Bradley Building deserve to feel safe and walk outside their homes, their apartments, to the County Market, Marine Bank, SIU Medical Center Building, and others. And they don't have that feeling now. They're scared that they're going to get mauled. There is an unwholesome atmosphere in the open areas. You know, the back door of Washington Street Mission is just a few steps away from the Abraham Lincoln Museum. These people sleep on top of the picnic tables under the old train station. Those are set up for picnics or people going, eating, going to the museum and the library. They're there. They sleep underneath the canopy of Dennis Albanese's building. There is inadequate security for the aged and infirm residents, and it'll be compounded, there'll be more, it'll be worse.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that Mr. Cohen wrap it up.
Sure.
Your point's been made.
Okay, that's fine, okay. Okay. I will stop, and I will say one thing. The Ru-DAT plan set aside this area for the medical district. And the city of Springfield adopted that plan by ordinance. And then the last thing. Why doesn't the city of Springfield, which is you folks, use the resources that you have? You have a nuisance ordinance, I read it. Among other things, it defines what is a nuisance, what constitutes a nuisance, and remedies and penalties for violating. Why hasn't this been invoked in this area? You did it in the library. You passed a, an ordinance to move people out of the, below the canopies of the library. Definition of zoning is to encourage development, but to do no harm. Is there any doubt in your mind that if this zoning passes, and these people move in there, and they triple the attendance, that it will do harm? On behalf of the answer, any questions that anybody may yet have?
Any questions for Mr. Cohen? Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
No further discussion?
Alderman? I, you know, this first came forth, we've actually seen this before, and we have turned it aside. I vowed this time not to turn it aside unless we had a valid option for them. I agree with points from both attorneys. And, you know, we, originally, when I, when I looked at the whole issue, I thought, you know, hey, this is great, we get to bring the homeless down where it is closer to their services that they do use. And that obviously would, I thought, would help eliminate some of the issues that we have. That being said, Bob Cohen has, also has valid points with the overall big picture of the city, with looking at the development and what the medical district was originally proposed for, and obviously, the SIU School of Medicine and their hopes to get housing for their residents downtown. So I took it upon myself, and I know Sam did as well, to try to find a solution. And through the last two weeks, both of us have called around and talked to several people, and including the executive director of Helping Hands and the executive director of the Springfield Housing Authority. When I talked with Rod, and Rod can either deny or accept it, but when I talked with Rod a couple of weeks ago, I asked him about some alternatives, and if where they were was a place that they could, they could live with and it would work for what they need. And his response was, "We need to make a lot of changes to the property, but if we don't have to move, that obviously helps us out. The one thing that we don't know, and that would be very beneficial, is to have a long-term agreement, so we don't get kicked around the city like we have the last several years." Springfield Housing Authority owns that building, their subsidiary nonprofit does. And I've talked with Jackie from Springfield Housing Authority and asked her, as did Sam, whether or not they'd be interested in doing a 10-year lease agreement, a long-term agreement with Helping Hands, and she adamantly stated, yes, they would. In addition to that, with knowing what Rod had told me about needing some new bathrooms, some extra bathrooms, some extra office space, et cetera, in the building that they have, and they do have some room to expand there, I talked with several business owners in the community. A lot of them have stepped forward and said they will do whatever they can to make that happen. Local labor's been involved and have stated that they would be willing to help with the building and work that needs to be done. And with that understanding, then, I think we have a valid alternative. I think we've got to stay there, everybody, an hour and a half, if we were allowed to speak beforehand, because I think it would have been a moot point. But I believe that since it is in the interest of both parties, that they agree that, on one hand, Helping Hands agrees that being where they are located is acceptable, and as long as those issues can be resolved in terms of expansion and the bathrooms that they need... and the bathrooms that they need, that they would love to stay there. And now that Sangman, or the Springfield Housing Authority has agreed to a 10-year, to give them a 10-year lease, um, and talk about that, I know they were going to talk about it today, um, then I think that, that that's probably an alternative that is very much viable, uh, in, in opposition to they sign a company. The other issue that I've always had since the beginning with they sign is the environmental aspect and the issues that they have and will run into with the paint and everything else that has been there. They've done a Phase 1 study and it has passed. I understand that. The Phase 1 study does not take into account, nor does it, uh, test any of the, the property or the materials on the property for toxic substances. We all know that the commercial paint that was used and it has been there for a while, that there are toxic substances in all that paint. And I can't imagine in the number of years they've been there, they didn't spill any. That being said, I don't think it would be fair to Helping Hands to get them into that building and then find out that they have a huge issue with a Phase 2, that they can't move forward on what they want to do anyway. And the fact that we have had several people step forward to say that they would help Helping Hands where they are currently and, um, and also the city has the, the means through community development block grant funds, et cetera, to help Helping Hands, that I think that's an alternative that, that would satisfy all the parties involved. That's what I would suggest.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman.
I mean, I agree with everything Alderman Dove and I spoke before the meeting and I agree with everything he had to say. This is obviously a very serious and difficult problem. Everyone wants to help the homeless. It's a question of where and how. And as an Alderman, we're elected to represent the people who live in our wards and I try to the best of my ability to carry that out faithfully. And to that end, when this issue presented itself, I held community meetings in both Sangman Towers and Near North Village and also served on a, a panel, uh, on a discussion that was sponsored by Downtown Springfield, Inc. To my community meetings, I invited all the players to address the residents of my ward who are most affected by this. And to give my constituents a forum to express their views. It was my hope, and I was working toward a solution which would address the current problems that were illustrated and presented at those meetings, the problems in the area that currently exist, so that the net effect of the improvements and the shelter would be to improve the area for the residents. But the filers of the protest petitions were unwilling to entertain any kind of scenario which resulted in a homeless shelter there regardless of what zoning restrictions were imposed. So it comes down to representing my constituents, the folks who live in Near North Village and Sangman Towers. They may not be the most powerful people in our community. They're not the big campaign donors. They don't live in Ivory Towers. They aren't the elite, the opinion makers, but they are members of our community. And because we live in a democracy, their views must be listened to as much as everyone else's. And whether the shelter would make matters worse or not in that area, I, I don't know. I'm not sure. But I do know that the overwhelming majority of the residents feel that it would. Some were for it, some of the residents were for it, some were, even said they were homeless at one time. But the overwhelming majority were opposed to it. And I agree with Alderman Dove. I think the best solution to this, and because we, we have to solve this problem, is to allow Helping Hands to stay in their current location at 10th and Madison. The, the reason they were, were implored to, to move initially was because that area was going to be taken over by the 10th Street Rail Expansion. But it could be five, 10 years down the line till it's necessary for, to take that land for the 10th Street Rail, uh, Expansion. And that area, that location is close to the services to homeless need. In fact, I was over there today and, by the way, I was over there between seven, around 1:00 o'clock and there were people, uh, there in the shelter. So I think Mr. Cohen is not correct that they kick all the people out of the shelter during the day, I think. And that they can't stay there during the day if they wish. But in any event, yeah, I noticed it was just like a half a block of stone's throw from St. John's Hospital. The Capital City Care Coalition owns that property, as Alderman Dove indicated. And they are willing, I think, to enter into some kind of a long-term lease that would terminate, uh, upon the, that land being necessary for the, uh, 10th Street Rail Expansion. I know there's at least a minimum amount of, uh, changes that would have to be, or work that would have to be done to that site, of at least four showers installed, the 220 electric line for a washer and dryer, and possibly a sprinkler system if the city regulations compel that. But, um, and I did talk to the Building and Construction Trades Council and they're willing, or they're at least willing to consider donating labor. And I just learned today from Alderman Dove, some builders are willing to donate material. So I think we as a community really have to come together to help Helping Hands solve this, their current problem. And we also have to have, help the folks at Near North Village and Sangman Towers and in that area solve the problems that are, uh, they're experiencing in that neighborhood. So, and I did get the assurance of the manager of the Near North Village and Sangman Towers that, uh, they would work with me to, to help solve those problems. So I look forward to doing that. And the bottom line is that my job as an Alderman isn't to impose my will on my constituents, but to bring the will of my constituents to, to the city council. And that's what I've tried to do tonight. Thank you.
Further discussion? Further discussion?
Two points that struck me tonight was the issue that Mr. Gates pointed to, that the proposed location is on the outer perimeter of our historic tourist district. And we have all kinds of permissible housing, uh, zoned areas within the historical district. So those that vote no tonight, uh, are really saying yes to possible, um, interior location of Helping Hands. So that's, that's one situation that we have to think about and remember, uh, that the, the outer perimeter is really a better, uh, location. Uh, that's number one. Number two, as far as Helping Hands, they are a well-run organization with 10 professionals that do their job well. They, uh, transition the homeless to more permanent residential situations. And not enough has been made of the fact that besides the shelter that Helping Hands runs, they also have 30 sites scattered out within our community where they have successfully transitioned homeless individuals to work and they pay rent and they take homeless off the streets. So I think Mr. Cohen was really arguing against his position because he was describing a problem of this loitering from the breadline to Washington and back and forth. And that's the problem. The solution is Helping Hands because they help taking people off the street. And so it's, it's a shame that we're at where we're at and I'm going to be a strong yes, even though recognizing that no solution, no arrangement is perfect. So you have to take the best of what's available and this is the best that's been made available. I understand Alderman Simpson, I completely agreed with Alderman Simpson about three quarters of a year ago when I voted no against Helping Hands going over to the corner of 11th and Edwards, uh, 11th and Capitol. Why? Because just, there was all new single-family homes right nearby. And I thought, well, we've, we've gone from, they're trying to rebuild that area, the single-family homes. There's some new homes right along there going west on Capitol. And this area here, it's a historical warehouse area and, and Washington Street Mission's been there for 90 years. You have to go three and a half blocks north before you get to residential concentrated families. You can't, you don't find anything going west. You don't find any single-family homes going east. You don't find any single-family going south. And I have an office that I've been at for, for 22 years at 212 South Second Street. So I'm about five blocks from the proposed site. I walk that area every day and there are problems with those that are out there. But I don't think those problem individuals are coming from Helping Hands typically. There are other kinds of problem people out there and they're not going away. And as far as Near North Village and Sangman Towers, I find it extremely, extremely ironic that a lot of the folks at, at those areas are making it because there've been government programs that have gotten them off their feet or they're keeping them in a, in a housing situation. And so now you've got kind of the management of those organizations kind of turning the poor against the poor by the powerful. And I, that has to be said because it's a, it's a factual statement. I know for a fact that I had a client once, she was, been on SDI, supplemental disability income for 20 years. She couldn't hold a job. She was barely hanging on there. She had severe psychological problems. And guess where she found a home on, with that SDI income? It was at Near North Village because they have very subsidized rent there. So now we've got this situation, we've got an area of, of our community where just, where many significant numbers of people are on, uh, helped rent with government programs, but we're turning against other people, trying to find their home in this community. So that just had to be, had to be said too. So thanks a lot.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question. Are, would the Helping Hands group still be entitled to the CDBG money if they stayed in the location where they're at?
They are, but again, what you're talking about is temporary location because chance, that is part of the rail project that that, that project would be taken. And one of the things that you would have to do for them to stay there on a permanent basis is sprinkler the property, property.
Right. And something else that I'd just like to, to say, that they are entitled to that money. But I don't think, uh, right now is the time to, to, uh, to jump on this through the Helping Hands people. You have the attention of everybody in Springfield. You definitely have the attention of everybody on this horseshoe that are standing here, standing up and saying, "We're willing to help." So now's the time to move, to get something done. Because we all do care. Thank you.
Alderman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, Alderman Dove, were you offering a compromise?
Yes.
Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Wayne?
This is the first I've heard about it, Alderman Simpson, so I, I would need to discuss that with my board. I wasn't aware of a 10-year plan that had been noted. I would also need to look at the amount of labor, amount of facilities that would be, I mean Springfield system is very expensive.
Yeah. And, and I would just inform, there, there would be some, some problems using CDBG funds at that, that site.
At which site?
The Madison Street site.
What Mayor Houston's referring to is, uh, Mike Farmer's office did do some decibel reading checks with the, with the train coming through there and there was some problems with CDBG eligibility for that location is what we were told. That was an older, when we were looking at the building before for purchase.
What about the issue that Alderman Dove raises with regard to paint issues and other, uh, that could be very, very bad paint because the building's been there forever? Could there be lead, lead in that building that would be a detriment to anybody who spends any long-term time there?
It's a good question and let me answer it really simply. No. There is no problem with lead paint contamination. There is none. I don't know where it's coming from. I understand you assume that there might be a problem, but this is a very regulated business. It has been, we've been there for 70 years.
60.
60 years. It's a very regulated business. There has been no environmental problems on that site. There are no environmental problems on that site. That's the answer. No, it's not a problem. Period.
I've always supported Rod. And I agree that it's always a good thing to look for alternatives because all people have a right to expect a decent quality of life. All people, that includes the homeless. When you're talking about public safety, if you, if you don't have public safety, then people don't have a quality of life. That's my biggest concern. The issue that, the issues that have been brought tonight are not new. They've been going on for a while. They've not been addressed and I blame, I blame the city. And I know the Police Department is short on, on manpower. I know that. But they have to, somebody has to get a handle on those individuals who would create an environment that's unsafe for elderly. I sit here having been someone who was attacked by an individual that, I don't know if he was homeless, but he was certainly, he had mental issues. It's not a good feeling. Okay? It, it really takes something away from, from you and you, you're not the same. That concerns me. We have elderly people, we have people who cannot fend for themselves, running up against those individuals who would behave badly. What are we, are you going to do about those individuals who you may not have any control over in terms of, of your facility? Whom you may even decide you turn away from your facility, then they're back in the, in that area behaving badly. What, what are you going to do? And I, I know you said that, you know, you have crisis intervention, people moving individual around, around the building. Is that good enough? Will, will, will that, will that take care of the issue when it hasn't been addressed, hasn't been significantly or sufficiently addressed in the past?
Can I answer?
Sure.
I believe that that's something that's not currently going on. So we would know that at least a tension from staff, I can't remember who it was earlier that said that they had stood there for a little bit and then people started dissipating. This is a non-policed problem right now and I don't mean non-policed as in no city police. I mean it's a non-managed problem. Once the mission closes their doors, that's a free-for-all back there. And the only time that it would be supervised at all is if the police did a stopover to say, "Hey, you all need to move along." If there was 11 professional staff there 24/7, 365, I believe we can only assume it would get better. Because right now, we would look at the property that was a public drinking spot prior and no one is there. I believe that these people will be moved along. And when I say moved along, I mean we would move them along out of the, out of the general block radius from where we're at. And we would, we would be committed to the Sangman Towers and Near North families as well. No, I don't believe we would be the end-all, be-all, solve-all to this problem. We would most definitely improve the problems they have now.
I think, just to start you real fast, clear question or a factual statement. We're open, what are the hours? When are you?
We're open 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. I'm not sure where the public perception that we close at 7:00 in the morning and open again at 5:00. I have no idea what that means, uh, other than when I initially had told people that we close our doors at 5:00 and reopen at 7:00. What I mean by that is, once individuals are in and assigned to their beds, they would not see the outside world again until 7:00 AM. That does not mean we close though from 7:00 AM on to 5:00 PM. We're open. That just means they can go about their business for the day.
So 40 beds?
40 beds.
What about the 44th, 44th, 41st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 45th person that doesn't get in? Where, what, what about them?
Well, at any time when we reach capacity, we only have to refer to our partners. So we would refer to Salvation Army. And then if it's in the wintertime, we can refer to the overflow. I mean, but when we get full, we get full. I mean, that's just the way, unfortunate, maybe it's an unfortunate truth, but we have to, we have to cap it to where it's safe for our staff and safe for others.
Alderman Edwards, then Alderman Dove.
Yeah, I, I've sat here, I've taken notes. Rod and Dennis showed up in my office and asked me to keep an open mind, to learn, to listen. And I've tried to do that. But I don't think any single-family residence is any more important than a senior high-rise. I really don't. It's their home. That's their home. Just like a single residence would be their home. I've, I've listened, but I've fallen back on my own experience. In 1977, I was assigned to the Fire Department Medical Squad and for 20 years I worked the street. I've seen the good that can happen in the street, but I've seen the things that can go terribly wrong in an instant in the street. Never once did I walk away from that experience. Never once did I walk away from that experience, either be with the homeless or not the homeless with hate. And I'm a little offended because somebody thinks the way that I may or may not vote is hate. But I have this image of my mom living in Sangamon Towers, who today would be 86-years-old, and I see her in that environment, which she'd have no control. And as eloquent as Mr. Gates spoke, I can't get past her, and she represents the seniors that sit here tonight, I can't get past that image of her being subjected to that kind of environment, because for 20 years I worked in that environment. I had people throw up on me. Not once did I feel hate for them, but I, how can I help you? Where I had to actually stand in the shower to clean my clothes up. Not once did I ever say, "I hate you for doing that." They're human beings, and they deserve to kind of expect that we can give them. But I can't subject the people that call their home Sangamon Towers to that kind of environment. And I listened to you when you were trying to answer the question up there about, do you think it'll be an improvement? And you said, "I assume that it will be." Well, assume, is it really good enough for me? It has to work. It has to be better. And, and to characterize a vote up here on what an alderman may vote or not vote, I find it totally unacceptable. The people up here are doing the best they can, and I respect you for any way that you vote. And I respect the Helping Hands for what they're trying to do. Is it gonna be a fun vote? No, it's not. And, and this community needs to address the problem. I've worked with the SOLS Shelter when they first opened to raise funds. I gave my time and I gave money. So for people to sit up here and characterize a vote is highly unfair. But I will not subject the seniors, which call their home, to that environment based on my own personal experiences. And I feel that single-family homes should be respected, along with people living in apartments, people living in high-rises, they deserve the same respect. And that's why I can't get past that image, and I'll have to vote no.
Thanks for sharing.
Alderman Dove?
I think what, what both sides agree is that there has to be an alternative, and that's what I think Sam and I have worked very diligently to create, an alternative. Kind of disappointed in Rod because I did leave you a message last night at 7:19 on your voicemail at the center for two minutes. I wouldn't just hold the phone for two minutes. Explaining to you that I had talked with Jackie, and she had agreed to a long-term rental agreement or lease agreement with you guys.
Missed that.
And that she would be calling you to try to work something out and get things rolling. So I just want to clarify that point. But I think that, that what everybody has asked for on both sides and cannot deny is that they are looking for an alternative. And if we could get an alternative, everybody was acceptable with, as long as it, it would work for both parties. And I know when I had talked with Rod, staying where they are was an acceptable alternative. That's what it took, if they didn't get this tonight. So that being said, I think we have offered an alternative, and it's not turning the back on the homeless, because I vowed not to do that from last time. As everybody has stated, and it doesn't need to be stated again, you know, they need, they need as much help as everybody else, and we cannot turn our backs on them. And that was the point of me doing what I did to try to find an alternative, because I would not vote against this if there wasn't one. And there is one, and that's, and it was, worked through very hard, through several people, not only in the community, but around this horseshoe for people that, to try to find you guys one. And we want to see you there. We want to see you stay. We want to see you expand. And I think that from the response that I have gotten from several people, that will happen. And I just, I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that there was an alternative. Joe kind of spoke like he'd never heard an alternative, but, you know, I think that's, that's the best of both sides.
Alderman Dove, thank you. I'm sorry I missed your message.
It's okay.
Mr. Mayor, would you explain the yes and no vote, so that we have clarity?
Basically, the, the motion that we have is to approve the planning and zoning commission recommendation, which is to deny the petition as submitted. So a yes vote denies it, a no vote would be voting against the denial.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to, very briefly, I completely agree with Alderman Edwards. You've got to respect all residents. I think I'm trying to say, as far as single-family residents, there's a, there's a different type of investment as between a tenant relationship and a owner-occupied situation, which is what I was referring to. As far as Alderman Edwards, I think you said you envisioned your mother living in that type of, of a high-rise, and I just want to say that I don't envision my father's brother living in a high-rise like that. He actually did live in a high-rise like that. He was, you know, shot down as a tail gunner on a B-17, prisoner of war for 17 months, and he was living on the street, on Skid Row for about 10 years. I used to visit him as a teenager, when he'd dry out periodically. But it was organizations like Helping Hands that got him off the street, off the gutter, into some assisted living and to get him back on his feet. And I, there was one comment by a restaurant owner that was made about a week ago. He said that he'd rather have folks in a shelter than on the step, on the pavement, laying flat at his restaurant early in the morning. And Helping Hands is gonna help solve a problem, and that's why I'm gonna be a yes vote on this.
I, I think that one of the things that, you know, when we, we talk in terms of homelessness, we have a problem within the community. And really, it's organizations like Helping Hand or the Salvation Army that puts together a program, not just to provide housing, but to take people and try to work them through a system to be able to get them back into a normal walk of life where they can get a job and have a roof over their head. And we're really very, very fortunate to have somebody like Helping Hands and the Salvation Army and other organizations within the city of Springfield that are providing these types of services, not just to get somebody off the street for a night, but literally to give them another chance to be productive citizens of the, of the community. And really, you know, I don't think there's anybody that really wants to be homeless. They, they would like to, to find a, a better life. And again, I, I think that as we, we look at, at this location, it, it certainly presents the potential of, of problems. I have enough faith in, in Helping Hands, and I believe that they will improve the situation in the neighborhood by, by being. Further discussion? There's no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, which is to deny the petition as presented, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Okay, motion passes to deny the petition on a 9-2 vote. The next item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2013-068 for property located at 2309 South Dirksen Parkway. The petitioners are Sherman Investors LLC. The present zoning classification is a B1 Highway Business Service District, Section I would ask that people be quiet as we continue to conduct our, our meeting, and you can talk once you're out in, out in the hall. Our requested zoning relief is a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.033, conditional permitted uses, and B1 Highway Business Service District and Section 155.200 taverns. The amended Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation, again, if you could be, if you could please allow us to conduct our meeting.
We should take a couple-minute recess, Mr. Mayor. You can just hold up for a second. We'll be good.
The amended Springfield-Sangamon County Regional, County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the condition permitted use to operate a tavern providing there is no outside seating, no live music, and provided that the business has greater than a majority of its revenues from sources other than the sale of alcohol. The planning and zoning commission recommendation is to approve the staff's amended recommendation for approval of the condition permitted use to operate a tavern providing there is no outside seating, no live music, and provided that the business has greater than a majority of its revenues from sources other than the sale of alcohol. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to hold this in committee for 30 days.
Second. It's been moved in second to hold the docket number 2013-068 in committee or in committee until our next zoning meeting.
Yes.
Further discussion?
Be November 19th.
Be November, the November 19th meeting. Any comments or?
We have no objection.
Further discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The next item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2013-069 for property located at 4202 Amy Court. The petitioner is John Hubbell. The present zoning classification is an R3B, General Residence District, Section 155.018. Requested zoning relief is a variance of Section 155.061, basic yard requirements to allow a rear yard setback of 17 feet, 18 inches, instead of the required 20-foot setback. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. The planning and zoning commission recommendation is approval of petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission and approve the petition as submitted. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Motion passes 9-0. The next item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2013-070 for property located at Oak Park Estates, Phase 4, 7, 11, 12, 16, and 17. The petitioner is Oak Park Estates LLC. The present zoning classification is an R1 Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to R2 Single Family and Duplex Residence District, Section 155.017, to allow the petitioner to develop said property to duplex residences. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. The planning and zoning commission recommendation is approval of petition as submitted. The chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission recommendation for Phases 7, 11, 12, 16, and 17, and a move to deny the recommendation to Phase 4. Mr. Barker's worked with the neighborhood associates out there. They've come to an agreement, and everybody's happy if we can move in this direction. We'd like to take 4 out, 7, 11, 12, 16, and 17 to be recommended to accept.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation and approve petition as submitted for Phase 7, 11, 12, 16, and 17, and deny the petition for Phase 4. Am I correct in the motion?
Yes, sir.
Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Motion passes 9-0. The final item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2013-072 for property located at 2100 South 6th Street in 100, 110, 220, 230, 240, 300, 400, and 500 Isles Park Place. The petitioner is Springfield Partners III. The present zoning classification is an S2 Community Shopping and Office District, Section 155.031. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to S3 Central Shopping District, Section 155.032, in a variance of Section 155.114A, regulations for location of off-street parking facilities to allow the petitioner to subdivide into three lots, use existing buildings, and construct a strip retail center at the northwest corner of the property. Also to allow shared parking on the three lots, which will allow the petitioner the highest and best use of the property by allowing cross-parking for this parcel in case of future lot ownership transfers. The amended Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial of the S3 zoning, but recommend approval of variances to allow the S3 zoning regulations related to setbacks, parking, landscaping, and transitional buffer yards to be used on the subject property in the S2 zoning district, and also recommends a variance of Section 155.114A to allow shared parking on the proposed three lots. The planning and zoning commission recommendation is approval of the staff's amended recommendation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the staff's amended recommendations.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the staff's amended recommendations. Discussion?
Yes. Will the, will the two buildings come down at all?
No.
Will they be?
I don't think so, no. It's not the plan of the, of the development.
So will there be tenants in those buildings, or they still be vacant?
Well, they're, they're proposing to try to fill those buildings, yes. I mean, they're always looking for tenants.
But the strip mall will, will be like around it?
Would be out to the Isles and 6th Street side, where the old Steak and Shake was. Six and Ash.
The Golden Bear.
Six and Ash, excuse me.
The Golden Bear.
It's old for me.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Motion passes 10-0.
Hey, Mayor. Before we go on, there's a class from Benedictine. If you'd recognize him, that'd be great.
Sure. Welcome.
You picked a heck of a night to be here.
You picked a long night to be here. Okay, the chair recognizes Treasurer Langford for presentation of a financial report.
Thank you, Mayor. The corporate fund monthly cash report for the month of September, we had a beginning balance of $7,673,262. Receipts for the month totaled $15,671,789. Disbursements for the month totaled $7,709,912. Surrendering cash balance in the corporate fund at the end of September totaled $15,635,00139.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chair, we're gonna skip doing the financial report if, if everyone is agreeable to that. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October 1st, 2013 city council meeting and approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
2013-393, Katie Spindell is here from the anniversary commemoration where we passed the resolution. If you want to say something, it's up to you.
I'm Katie Spindell. Can you step to the podium? Do you stand here or here?
No, come forward, please, Ms. Spindell.
I'm Katie Spindell, and I'm the chairman of the 2015 Lincoln Funeral Coalition. Mr. Mayor?
Correct.
And the rest of the aldermen, thank you so much for pushing this resolution forward. I am terribly grateful, and on behalf of the coalition, I tell you thank you from our hearts.
I have a question, if I may. Were you able to do any research to find out if there were African-Americans at the funeral?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Excellent.
And we have wonderful way of handling that today.
Excellent.
Yes, and I'd love to, I'd love to tell you about that sometime. We, we figured it out.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, agenda numbers, 2011-104, 2012-1, excuse me. Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Motion pa, we've got, who is?
We're missing two.
Turner. Motion, we've got, who is Turner? Let's go.
We need to vote on the consent agenda.
Motion passes 10-0. Okay, agenda numbers 2011-104, 2012-123, 2012-226, 2012-376, 2013-128, 2013-174, 2013-193, 2013-250, 2013-260, 2013-266, and 2013-296 remain tabled or in committee. The next item on the agenda is number 2013-376, an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 32.06 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinance as amended pertaining to the powers and duties of the mayor regarding executive orders. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2013-376 on final passage.
Mayor, I move to send this back to committee. There was a, and there was an amendment, I had requested a written amendment that the staff didn't have time to prepare, so I'd like to, so I'd request it to be sent back to committee, and then we can put the amendment on in committee or not.
All those in favor of sending it back to committee, say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2013-378, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $8,575 for the Springfield Fire Department. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2013-378 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The passage, discussion?
A discussion. Mayor, I'm gonna state the reasons for my no vote. I think travel of this nature should be requested before the travel takes place. I think the funding should be approved prior to the travel taking place. I think sending six to the same conference in Colorado is overkill, to be honest, and duplicative, and unnecessary to send six for the same training. And as far as, when you look back at the historical spending for travel by the fire department, I noticed that in fiscal 2012, their entire amount of transportation was $141 spent in fiscal 2012. In fiscal 2013, the total amount for travel, and I'm talking about travelers, excuse me, transportation, which is one of the three components of travel, you've got lodging, transportation, per diem makeup travel. The total amount spending was $3,000. So I think when we pass a, now, for this fiscal year, 2014, the city council approved $36,000 total for per diem transportation, lodging, and I think there's an intent there to kind of control travel by setting the budget and that nature. And so then, when the travel takes place, and afterwards, we get a supplemental appropriation, I think that's the wrong approach. And I'd like to point out, too, that the aldermen up here, we receive, there's nothing in our budget for travel, for the 10 aldermen, zero. I mean, right now, there's the Illinois Municipal League, they're having their conference up in Chicago. Not a single alderman will have any expenses to travel to that very important conference up there. And to my knowledge, I don't think any alderman has spent a dime of travel in the two and a half years I've been on this council. I think that's real commendable of this council, the aldermen that sit on this council. None of the aldermen expense their cell phones against the city. No alderman has laptops. And the point I'm trying to make is that when the employees of the city go off to Colorado, it just, as an alderman, it just doesn't strike me as right. I think we should've spent one or two to that conference, and I'm not gonna ask if any spouses accompanied the six individuals that went to that conference. But if we're gonna reward our employees, I think it should be with a solid package of pay, which they receive, a solid package of benefits, which they receive. But this kind of travel, I think it's unnecessary. So that's an explanation of my no vote on this.
And just a point of order, this is to reimburse the fire department for that travel?
I understand that, Mayor, but...
So it's, this was not any travel that's being done by the, at city expense?
Well, no, hold on a second. I just wanna explain that, Mr. Mayor. When our personnel are at a conference, they're not performing their normal duties. They're getting paid their salary to be in Colorado. So there is a loss of duty time right here in Springfield when we send six away. So that has to be pointed out. And by the way, Mr. Mayor, let me ask, just out of a point of curiosity, did you receive, who gives approval when a department director?
I do.
Okay, so you approved the six individuals?
I approved this based on the fact that it was not gonna cost the city anything to send these people to a conference where they would learn things, but they would be being brought back to the city of Springfield and using their everyday work.
Okay, well, I just was curious about that. So you approved this?
Yes.
Okay.
I also questioned it before I approved it.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
I just wanna point out, I don't know, by, if we vote no, I think Alderman McMinniman raises some good points, but to vote no on this, to defeat this motion, would just mean that the money, the funds from the city treasury would be denied, these funds from the Foreign Fire Insurance Board. Under this ordinance, we're gonna get the $8,575 that was already spent on this trip reimbursed from the Foreign Fire Insurance Board. So if we vote no, that just means we have $8,575 less in the city treasury, so, you know, maybe in the future, we should be more, I think it's a good idea to maybe be more conservative on these types of things, but that's all I have.
Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Alderman Cammon. I think voting no means that, too, that we may have overspent some of these accounts already. I don't know, I'm not gonna inquire into that. But we had a total of $6,000 set aside for transportation, and I don't know if we've overspent that, and so now we're trying to get back within budget. So that's another issue on that.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 9-1. The next item on the agenda is number 2013-396, an ordinance accepting grant number 14-365001 from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $85,000, with matching funds in the amount of $85,000 for a total grant amount of $170,000 for the International Tourism Marketing Grant Program beginning July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $85,000 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau for Emergency Passage. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2013-396 on emergency passage.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yes, please. I just wanted to clarify for the public, I'll be voting present because this is my employer.
And again, the reason that we're asking for the emergency passage is that this is something where we are receiving the $85,000 and want to get the grant back to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity.
Mayor, thank you. It's not international, it's marketing partnership grant.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
So this is an error, then, in the description, where it says for the International Tourism Marketing Grant?
We did that three weeks ago, four weeks ago. Whatever. This is a, it's called Marketing Partnership Grant.
Okay, thank you.
So it's to promote domestic tourism, do we need to?
Yeah, it's, it's, we need to. It's good. It's marketing, it's paying for brochures, maps, ad placement.
That are targeted at people who live in the USA.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Wait, I got another poll.
Are the numbers correct? Are the numbers correct?
85, yes, 85,000.
Yes, they are, they are correct.
The amounts are correct, okay.
Further discussion? Hearing no?
We're checking, we need to amend that.
Just for clerical purposes, I make a motion to change any point in the ordinance where it refers to international tourism to...
To marketing partners.
To marketing partners.
Come on.
It's been moved and seconded to amend this, to put the marketing language in, in any place that international may appear. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the amendment say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the amended docket number 2013-396, vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open.
Just waiting on you.
Motion passes 10-0. The Chair will entertain a motion for an omnibus vote to suspend the rules and place on first reading ordinance numbers 2013-418, 2013-419, 2013-420, and 2013-421. Ordinance number 2013-418, an ordinance to increase the number of Class B liquor licenses by one for Max Convenience Stores, LLC, doing business at Circle K, number 190, 2201 North Eastern Parkway. Ordinance number 2013-419, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW14-0850 with Jarwin Industries, VJ Contractors, absolute demolition and hood demolition and excavation, for demolition and site clearance of 31 unsafe and dangerous structures for the Office of Public Works, and an amount not to exceed $184,751. Ordinance number 2013-420, an ordinance accepting the low bid and authorizing execution of contract number NB14-126C with Sammon Valley Landfill and Waste Management of Illinois Incorporated, for disposal of demolition debris in the amount not to exceed $150,000 for the Office of Public Works. An ordinance number 2013-421, an ordinance authorizing extension of contract number CC12-09 with Disability Management Network Incorporated and Illinois Corporation, doing business as Triune Health Group Inc. to provide workers' compensation, comprehensive case management services for the city of Springfield, in amount not to exceed $185,792.60 for the time period of July, excuse me, January 1, 2014, through December 31, 2014, for the Office of Budget and Management. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, these should've been on first reading, rather than hold them for two weeks, we're just...
Were they distributed to the aldermen at the beginning of the...
Yes, yes. And again, they'll just be going to the committee to hold them next Tuesday. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye, all those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
I would like, if possible, corporation counsel, if you could prepare for me what the tuition reimbursement rules are, tuition reimbursement, and who sits on the committee that determines who gets reimbursed, and also a list of those individuals who have been reimbursed and what benefit it had to the city, if that's a requirement.
And I think that the, we'll ask the Office of Budget and Management Director McCarthy. Director, would you just go ahead and respond to that request?
What was the request?
That was with regards to tuition reimbursement.
What the rules are, what...
Yeah, HR's got a policy, we can get it to you.
A policy? No, you gotta listen to all of it, since you weren't listening. Who sits on the committee that makes the decision? And, pardon me?
The tuition reimbursement committee consists of myself, the HR director, and Mr. Logan.
Can you provide it to me in writing, please? Thank you.
Sure, I can do that, too.
And then, I need to know those individuals who have received tuition reimbursements, and what benefit it was to the city.
Okay.
Thank you. And...
What period of time?
Pardon me?
What period of time?
I know you probably have to do it manually, so give me, what, two weeks, a month?
Say for the last year.
Oh, the period of time, okay.
Yeah, one. They're rather infrequent, so if you wanna go back a year, we probably can do that.
Actually, can I have it for your, since you've been in office?
Well, how about if, since we put the policy in, put the policy in place?
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, that, because I can't really speak before we had a policy as to what...
That'd be fine. Policy's been in place.
We can do that.
So how long would that take?
Hmm, we'd probably do it in less than a week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And you could provide it to all the aldermen?
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, last week, we, there was, you know, questions raised with regards to the number of hires that I have done since I've been in office. We did send out information after the committee to hold last week, but you also have at your, I believe, your place, a chart that shows the number of hires since I have assumed office in 2011, which, when you break that down, in terms of total hires, we were at 15.8% in terms of African-American, 2.3% in terms of Hispanics, so that our total minority hires are 18.1% since I have assumed office. And if we were to go ahead and exclude police and fire, which requires written test, that number would jump to 19.2%.
Mayor, I'm glad you did this. Can you have your staff also prepare a list of those individuals that are in those positions and their titles?
I would imagine that we could. I mean, I don't know if we have something that we could just print off, but I'm, we have the, certainly all the names, if...
And their titles. I appreciate that.
Okay.
And also, Human Resources Director has a background in EEO, so she should be able to provide the breakdown of all of the categories, professional, office managers. You can do that? But you could just give me that, I don't want the whole plan, I just want that portion. Thank you.
Okay, is there any new business to come before the council? We have two people that have signed up to speak tonight, Shanetta Henderson. Ms. Henderson here. Teresa Haley.
This has been a long night, we've lost some people, as you can see. The NAACP, my name is Teresa Haley, I am the president of the Springfield branch, NAACP. Here are my executive committee members, and some of them, as I stated, left. Good evening, aldermen, thanks for listening to us. We have some concerns as the NAACP. The first concern is residency requirement. When you ran for election, that was a priority. We would like to know tonight, is it still a priority for you?
Actually, when I ran for office, I looked at the contracts that the city of Springfield had, and they had 23 different contracts. There was only one contract that mentioned residency, which was the firefighter's contract. And in that contract, what it indicated was that if, in fact, the city adopted a residency policy, that the city would have to negotiate. After I was in office, what I found out was that, under the State Labor Relations Board, that if we were to institute a residency requirement, we would have to negotiate with all 23 unions in order to be able to institute that. Approximately, we have about 1,475 employees, approximately 300 are non-union. So if we were to implement a residency policy, it would only affect the non-union people unless we went ahead and went back and negotiated with each of those unions to put that into the contract.
Aren't most of your top heads non-union employees?
In terms of...
Your top leadership?
Your top, your department heads are required to live within the city.
Okay. Next question is...
Let me finish, if I could.
Okay, as long as you don't use the time against me.
The situation would be that if we would go back to negotiate those contracts, from an economic point of view, they're not just gonna give us that without getting something back. And I personally believe that's not something the city can afford.
Okay, it's something that the NAACP would like to see happen here in Springfield, because we do have qualified minorities, especially blacks, throughout the city of Springfield, who are constantly passed over for jobs. You indicated that since you've been in office, it's been 18.3 or 19.2 minorities under your leadership. There are a lot of qualified minorities here in Springfield. We'd like to see at least the number of minorities hired here at the city of Springfield representing the total number of minorities who live here in the city of Springfield.
And the exact number in terms of African American is 15.8% of our hires have been African American, and our total minority hires are 18.1%.
Thank you. In terms of recruitment, why are minorities for fire and police department being washed out by the psychological examination? We would like for the city to look at it, for you, Mayor, to look at it, because there are barriers for hiring minorities. Blacks are being moved, removed from the pool after taking the psychological evaluation. Is this a qualifying factor in why for hiring?
Well, again, we use a professional to do that evaluation, and we take the recommendations of the professional. And that involves both Caucasians as well as non-Caucasians in terms of people that both pass and fail.
Okay. We believe that this is subjective, and it prevents minorities, especially blacks, from an opportunity for employment with the city's police and fire department. We are also requesting that when the contract is up for bid, the next time you hire someone to do the psychological evaluation, that we consider hiring someone in the state of Illinois instead of the state of Missouri, because it doesn't make any sense for us to pay someone outside of the state of Illinois when we're hurting here. Next, the Civil Service Commission. What is the role they are playing when it comes to the hiring process? We are concerned, and we want this to be addressed. We've had several individuals come to us who were candidates for the police and fire department, who were passed over. They passed the psychological exam, they passed the physical agility and everything else that they were supposed to go through, but when it got to the Civil Service Commission, they were marked out. What can you do to correct that situation?
I can only say that if they were somehow removed from the list, there would have been specific reasons, and they would know what those reasons are.
But what can we do to change those reasons, because we believe that those reasons are subjective as well?
Again, we can take, take a look at the criteria that is used.
Please do that, let's get together and meet. The other thing I just want to point out, it seems like everyone is pimping the city of Springfield who don't live here. We see it with the contracts that are coming in, and we are really concerned. And if we're talking about bringing business to Springfield, we're looking at possibly bringing the National Convention of the NAACP to Springfield. Why should we bring dollars into Springfield when we don't drive around and see people who look like us working on these job sites? That's a really concern for us.
And that is certainly a problem, and that's a problem that is not a new problem, it is not a problem that is easily addressed.
And in closing, we don't want all of the charitable organizations to be located on the east side. I know that you were talking about the zoning earlier, but it seems like when there's a charitable organization and you're looking for somewhere to place them in the city, it's always on the east side. Send them somewhere else. Everyone deserves an opportunity to experience life and be exposed to life throughout the city of Springfield, and be able to travel through the city of Springfield to receive those same services.
I wouldn't disagree with you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Teresa?
Yes.
If you might entertain this idea, and I pass this on, but one thing that can be done, even though we have contracts and we have things like that, is there's nothing that prevents us from preferential hiring for residents and for promotional exams. And I'll just kind of guide you to the Boston Fire Department website, and there, they're pretty adamant about residential. And the way that works is you can give additional points, you can do things like that as an incentive to live in our community. So rather than just say, I want the total package, there are steps that you could take to get you where you need to go.
I look forward to working with you, Frank, on that.
All right, Teresa.
And this body would need to be in agreement with that. The mayor didn't mention to you, but last week, or was it before last?
It was last week.
We passed, yes. We passed the contract, it went through for the same individual that's been doing the psychological.
Okay. That's unfortunate, Mayor. We're very, very disappointed to hear that. The last thing, is there a affirmative action plan for the city, and is it working?
We do have an affirmative action plan, and we do believe it is working.
Yeah, we believe that it's not working if you have one, if we have to ask that question.
If you look at the numbers, again, the numbers are what the numbers are. And I think that if you look at this from a historic perspective, we've made a lot of progress.
But you know, Mayor, when you live in the city of Springfield, and you grew up in the city of Springfield, like most of you all have here at the table and us here, we are still concerned. Just because you're meeting the 18, 19%, does it mean that's the highest that you can go? Well, somehow we have to begin to break through this glass ceiling. And there's something to say, okay, well, we've got enough, we don't have to hire anymore. We are equally qualified, just as qualified and more qualified than some other individuals, and all of us want to be given the same opportunity. What difference does it make if it's 25% minorities? Why do we have to put our foot on us, or put our foot on our necks when you reach the 18 and 19% and say, well, we've done a good job? We haven't done a good job.
Mayor, I think Teresa makes a valid point. I think we have to acknowledge the progress that the Houston administration has made in improving minority hiring, and that doesn't discount what you say, that we can still make further improvements, greater improvements, and we have to continue to work on that. Thank you.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
I'd like to address the residency part of this. I'm extraordinarily disappointed in Mayor Houston for misunderstanding labor law. And when, we structured that referendum on residency very carefully to be able to avoid labor disputes. How did we do that? Because the proposal was to have a residency requirement only on new hires. So you grandfather out all the existing hires and just let that, just let those conditions remain as they are. And the point is, Mr. Mayor, and you misrepresented the facts before that referendum, and yet you still got, you know, your point of view got soundly defeated. And the voters were a strong yes, let's have a residency requirement. But here's the point, when you, yes, you have to negotiate conditions of employment, yes, you have to negotiate conditions of employment, but if you're not changing the conditions of employment for your existing employees, what is there to negotiate?
That's not right.
And so, well, I've talked with labor experts besides yourself, and that's what I'm hearing from some experts. And as far as the mayor saying, well, we'll have to give away millions of dollars to get a residency requirement, to have a requirement for new hires, I think that's misleading, it shows no leadership, and it takes us down the wrong path. And so from my point of view, I don't see a, I think it would be a mistake at this point for us to pass an ordinance to have a residency requirement while Mayor Houston's still in office, because I think he would fail to execute it properly, because we're putting a man to negotiate contracts who is upfront, saying he's going to give away the house. He'll negotiate and give away everything, he'll give away millions. We don't want a mayor that does, that has that point of view. And there's no issue that's disappointed me more than that issue, Mayor.
Everybody is entitled to their own opinion.
And that's my opinion.
And, you know, you can go as far afield as you would like.
I'm not going far afield, I'm going right where the voters vote.
How many contracts have you negotiated?
Well, I've talked with former corporation counsel.
I just asked you.
If you get this back on track.
Okay.
We have no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to us, and if we don't like what we're seeing, we'll just vote you out. Thank you.
That's your privilege. Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the city council for the purpose of holding an executive session to discuss collective negotiation matters and pending probable litigation pursuant to five... Excuse me?
Before we do that, I do want to recognize a young man that's been here for a very, very long time. The Sigma Beta Club, that's a youth leadership organization of Phi Beta Sigma fraternity, came tonight, and Russell Moore stuck it out, so I think he should be acknowledged.
Please come back and see a normal meeting.
Don't let him kick, that was a normal meeting.
Going in and out of the...
The chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the city council for the purpose of holding an executive session to discuss collective negotiation matters and pending probable litigation pursuant to five ILCS 120/2C, two and 11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second discussion, there are no discussions. All those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open.
Yes, you do need to vote, thank you.
Edwards?
Got a break.
Vote?
You got enough for silliness, sir.
Motion passes ten, oh.